All right, we are straight up at six o'clock. Hello, everyone. Let me check in the staff and see if we are ready to go to begin our meeting tonight.
Thank you, Mayor. We are ready to go.
Excellent. Well, with that, I'd love to welcome everybody to our regular joint meeting of the Kattati City Council and the Successor Agency to the former Kattati Community Redevelopment Agency for Tuesday, October 11th, 2022. And I'd like to jump next to ask the city clerk if we could have a roll call of council members' presence, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Here.
Councilmember Ford?
Here.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Here.
Mayor Landman?
And here. And if I could ask City Manager Obit if we could have an introduction to staff who are present tonight, please.
So, tonight, attending the meeting, we have obviously myself, Damian Obit, City Manager. We have our city attorney, John Barker, with us tonight. And we have three of our department heads. We have Noah House, our Community Development Director. We also have Craig Scott, our Public Works Director, City Engineer. And we also have Angela Quarter, our Director of Administrative Services. We also have Autumn Bus here tonight, who is one of our planners for one of the items on the agenda tonight. And then finally, Kevin Patterson, our Deputy City Clerk.
Excellent. Well, thank you, Mr. Obit. All right, with that, we're going to jump now to the Pledge of Allegiance. I will invite anybody who would like to join me, please join in. I pledge allegiance to the flag
United States of America. And to the Republic which it stands.
One nation
One nation
Under God, indivisible
With liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, that moves us next to approval of minutes and notice of waiving of reading ball resolutions and ordinances introduced and or adopted under this agenda. This is an action item. So first, I'll ask my colleagues in the council if they have any corrections or additions to the minutes as written. And I will slide over and see if I can see most of you at once, and I can tonight at this moment. That's good. Not seeing any hands there? So next, I will go to public comment for this, as this is an action item.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, then I will bring it back and see if I have a motion. This is minutes for the regular meeting on September 27th, 2022. And I'll look to see if I have a motion in seconds. I see the Vice Mayor is already there. Thank you, Vice Mayor Harvey.
One second.
And a second from Councilmember Sparks. Thank you both. And if we could have a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. All right. Next, this brings us to item five, which is announcements. And I will ask everyone to bear with me while I have a few paragraphs of announcements that I need to read to everybody here tonight. And I'll begin with our meeting orientation for new viewers' attendance. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item, and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizens' business item, which is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Next, Measure S supports police services, a variety of recreation programs for all ages, and the maintenance of our streets, parks, and public buildings. And you can see details regarding this on the web at kattatacy.org. Next, citizens who are interested in receiving City of Kattati community alerts by text or email are encouraged to sign up with Nixle by downloading the Everbridge app from the iOS or Android App Store or by simply texting your zip code, 949312888777. And finally, like always, we do love to hear from you. So please feel free to contact the city at 707-792-4600 or at info@kattatacy.org. Now, if you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can still contact us at 707-792-4611. And of course, if you have an emergency, please do contact 911. Continue to look for updates on the city's website and our social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixle, and Nextdoor. So next, we have a presentation tonight, and I believe we have a review of a draft city website. And I'm going to see if Mr. Obit's going to be doing our presentation on that.
Yes, Mayor, I'll do the overview.
Excellent.
Yeah, all right. So thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We we've been working on an update and a refresh to the city website, and we're just about there with the draft. And I was just going to share my screen here so I can show you what that looks like right now. All right, so this is our homepage. I'm not going to literally go through every menu because that will take all night, but just to give you the flavor of the new website. So it's similar in a lot of ways to our existing website where we have these top-level menus, search bars, links to our social media, series of images here that rotate as well as these icons, like these tiles, which are the which are the main the main navigation features that we have on the homepage. So this is the same as our, these icons here are the same as our current webpage. It's just this one off on the far right that is that's new. So projects in progress has been elevated to this homepage, and this is this is both development projects or public works projects. So oftentimes, we get questions about, you know, what a project is, what project is this that's going on in town? This is an easy way to find them without having to go through the menus to find them in planning or engineering. Below that, we have just latest views. So it scrolls on the three latest, and you also can see past stories. And then then we have a new calendar, which is more functional. This is a general calendar. This includes all stuff, all events. And then these would be the city council or planning commission or board meetings only and recreation events only. So you can filter it by those three ways. And then you can obviously learn more about each one of these if you click through on them. And then, oh, look at that, the bottom. There you guys are. So these are the, these are the council members, and then you can click through and it's into the respective bios, through to the council members. And then, you know, the kind of footer stuff at the bottom. This view we're looking at right now is a normal like desktop computer view. You can also, oh, here, let me put this one down. And then this is our current, this is what our current page looks like. So it's very, so you can see it very similar in format, but the calendar is, and the new page is much more functional. And it has just better navigation features than our current page. So we all right. So this is, again, this is the desktop view, but if you take it down to a mobile size, you can see what it would look like if you looked at it on your phone or a mobile device. So this is what it looks like in the mobile view. Anyway, it's built in for full view in all types of devices, full desktop view, iPad scale or mobile phone device. So it should be easy to use and navigate in any one of those platforms. And then also these are all fully ADA accessible. So they have all the features you need to make them fully accessible to to meet all the ADA standards. And that so it's just the end of kind of kind of see what it looks like if you looked at it on your phone. So anyway, with that, I'd be, that's pretty much it. Be happy to answer any questions or take any feedback if you have any at this point.
Well, we'll jump back over to the council, see if there's any common questions, and we're going to lead off tonight with Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I just had two questions. First of all, the council member pages used to be, if you clicked on there, our pictures were all squished up, and the aspect ratio was really weird. Is that getting fixed or not? And then the other question is, is the way that the search bar functions behind the scenes getting any improvement? Or is it just the same? Thank you.
Yeah. Um, so I haven't fully tested the search bar to see, I know the current, one on the current website is not that functional. And same with, I mean, it's okay, but it's not great. And then the meeting portal that I think you're talking about, that search bar is really not that great at all. And I will say that, and that's where the images are that you're referring to, that are, you know, where they're stretched and they don't fit right. We can, I'll have, I'll have staff look at that to see if we can edit the photos differently so that they fit in that space correctly, but you know, more medium or longer term, we're looking at also potentially some different legislative platforms that might be more functional in terms of the searching in particular. So.
All right, very good. Going to jump to the Vice Mayor. Go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
I would second what Councilmember Sparks said about the search. The search, I try many different ways sometimes to find things, and the search is kind of clunky. So I'm hoping that that's new and improved because it's not as robust as I think that it could be. So hopefully that will get better. So, but other than that, I love the pictures and the look of it. So thank you for that.
Yeah, I will say too, you know, when we look at the website usage metrics, you know, we try to highlight the things that people go to. I mean, this is by far, these things are by far the most common things that people come to our website for. And then in the how, in the how do I, we try to, you know, put the most sort of second or common things that people are looking for. So we'll do some more testing on the search, on the search bar, but just generally speaking, in terms of design, we try to, you know, we try to service those things so that they're more available around the homepage about a lot of clicks.
Very good. Councilmember Ford?
Real quick, what's the anticipated switch-over date?
Right, right now, we're looking at going live on Friday, this Friday. Yeah. So there's, there's some like, you know, DNS server stuff that we need to switch over. So there may be like a 15-minute or so outage when browsers can't find the right website, but we picked a low-use day, so hopefully it's pretty noticeable to most people.
So just to follow up, when I, there are some links in the new site that still link back to pages in the old site. Will those get fixed by Friday?
Yeah, yeah, we've been going through getting all these, all these little things cleaned up, but if there's specific things, please forward them to me. That way you can make sure I catch them all, but they should, we have been actively going through it every day, testing it and finding stuff that needs a little cleanup here and there.
Okay. Oh, I see. Some of them go to the IQM2, which is the site you were talking about, the meeting site. That's not changing?
No, no, there's, there's some links, there's some links that go to third-party sites like the
Okay.
portal, which is the IQM2 or ClearGov for projects.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah.
Good. Well, I've noticed the aspect ratio problem, but I've never said anything because I'm not sure if I'll wind up looking better or worse when you fix it. So it may be completely immaterial to me, but I will say, all kidding aside, that I think this really isn't quite an improvement in initial appearance and ability to navigate just landing on it. It's similar to the previous one. It works well. But I think this design has the ability to work well both in desktop use, which some of us still like to use, as well as working well in mobile format. So I think that's going to be quite a benefit. So I wish you good luck on this switch over. My experience is no new website goes live without at least a couple of small bugs. So I hope that's the worst you have to deal with, and I wish you all good luck with that. And if we see anything, we'll certainly let you know.
Yeah, thank you. Please do.
So since we've shown this and talked a bit about it, it's not listed as an action item, but I'd like to go to public comment, just in case the public has an input, maybe something we missed.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Marjorie Crump Shears, please go ahead.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. Damian, what a beautiful look. Love it, love it, love it. I want to encourage, however, in any of the photographs that accompany our city website, that we show the diversity of the population in our city. Please. Love seeing the children. They are adorable. And the adults are okay, too. But we are, we are a mixed group, and I think it is important to show that. So good work. And let's include more color in the photographs. Thank you.
Kay Rivers, please go ahead.
So, hi. I just wanted to make the quick comment that I also think it's absolutely beautiful. I am hoping that the city council pages in the future will be able to have some type of like running news stream or something where we can like post where we're going to be, if people want to meet us places or that type of thing. Or, you know, upcoming meetings outside of the regular city council meetings that people might want to come to. And I just think it would be really great if we had some flexibility on the individual pages that they weren't just static. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. So we will bring it back. Let's see. So this item was merely a review and a presentation. The action is being taken. So this brings us to item number seven tonight, which is approval of the final agenda. Again, an action item. So I will check with the city manager and see if we have any changes to the calendar tonight.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I am proposing that we make one change under public hearing, item 11A, which is otherwise known as the ag ordinance, urban ag ordinance. After publication, we noticed that the ordinance unintentionally omitted the use in the proposed zoning code amendment. So I recommend that the council not hear this item tonight. Staff will correct the omission and bring it back at a future city council meeting.
Okay, yeah, I think we probably kind of need to do that. First, I'll check. I see a hand up from one of my colleagues. I'll go to Vice Mayor Harvey.
Thank you. Damian, I know extended notifications were made of tonight being the hearing on this. Will those be redone so that folks will have the opportunity to participate in the public hearing?
Yeah, when it comes back, it'll all be re-noticed. And yeah, it'll be re-noticed, and the people that we know of that are interested in this item, we reach out to them as well.
Okay. So even the folks that got snail mail mailings, those will go out again? I know some of those went out.
Yeah, I don't believe, I don't believe any, I don't believe any public, like, direct mailings to people went out. It's more email noticing to people that are interested. And the newspaper notices, the public hearing notices.
Actually, can I, can I step in really quick, Damian?
Yeah.
So we noticed
So, uh, we noticed the, um, this public hearing for the urban agriculture ordinance to all of the addresses in the, uh, rural residential and the residential very low density zones, uh, as you know, we had committed to doing that. Um, I keep an email list of folks who have contacted us or who have spoken at the past meetings where we have their email addresses and I also notified them directly as well. So when this item comes back before the council, we will redo all of that noticing.
Okay, that's all that I was asking for because I know that some folks in the rural area did receive snail mail notices and just wanted to be sure that that opportunity was there again. So thank you for that, Anna.
All right. I'm not seeing any further hands, so I just want to confirm we will then table public hearing 11A until it's ready to be brought back. Uh, so since we won't be discussing this or taking action on it, um, but I know I may have some people here tonight that wish to comment. So if, uh, anybody wishes to comment, they're certainly welcome to during the public comment portion of this approval of the final agenda, since we made that change, or during public comment, which is the next agenda item. Uh, so with that segue, uh, I'll go to public comments, see if anybody has anything they wish to share on this.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you would like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Thank you. And again, my apologies to anybody that might've been here or following this. These things happen rarely, but they do happen occasionally and it's certainly important to do it right, rather than to do it and find that you've made a mistake and something that you've made an ordinance out of. Would certainly like to avoid that, I know. So with that, then we are at approval of the final agenda. This is an action item, even though it is somewhat pro forma. So I'll ask if I can have a motion in a second.
Move to approve. Agenda has amended.
Second.
Thank you, Councilmembers Ford and Vice Mayor Harvey. We could have a roll call vote in that, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And that's a yes. So that moves us then to item eight, which is citizens' business and public comment for consent calendar items. And I do have something to read once again, and that is that any member of the public wishing to speak to the council on any items, uh, listed on the consent calendar, or any matters not listed on the agenda that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, may do so at this time. Pursuant to the Brown Act, uh, council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item that is not listed on the agenda during this period. Pursuant to City Council Policy 2021, uh, dash zero one, comments of any member of the public are normally restricted to a total of three minutes in length per person and for matters not on the agenda, and a total of three minutes per person in length for any and all items on the consent calendar. And as always, the mayor may extend the time limit for a reasonable time where a disability accommodation has been requested. So with that, let's open public business and see if we have citizens' business and see if we have any comments on that or the consent calendar.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Tammy, please go ahead. Tammy, you have the floor.
It doesn't look like she has talking enabled.
Yeah, not seeing a microphone connection. Will you have Tammy a minute to see if she can resolve this? If not, perhaps we can go to our next person and we'll see if we can come back to Tammy and give her the opportunity to speak.
Uh, that is the only public, uh, comment, the only raise hand at this time. Um, if Tammy can hear us, we're getting a notification on our side that your version of Zoom is an older one. And so unfortunately it's, it's not allowing us, um, it's, uh, not allowing your, your microphone to activate. So at this time, uh, with no other public comment, that will end public comment.
All right. Uh, technology is a wonderful thing, but it certainly can be regrettable at times as well.
May, Mayor Land, might we have the clerk read out the, the phone number so that she could phone in her comment?
That's a very good suggestion. Why don't we take a moment and do that? Thank you, Mr. Ford.
Uh, yes, thank you. Let me, uh, so it, it, it can be, uh, any one of the, the following phone numbers that are listed on the front page of the agenda. Um, I'll read out the first one here in the interest of not reading seven phone numbers. Uh, but the first one is area code six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And you can, uh, call that and then enter the meeting ID and the passcode. And those are all found on the front page of the agenda, which can be found at katari-city.org. Thank you.
And Mr. Patterson, I'm going to ask you to repeat that email or excuse me, that phone number one more time slowly, as well as sharing the information you mentioned, just to make it easier for this person if they're trying to frantically jot this down.
Absolutely. Uh, we'll start with the phone number. That is area code six, six, nine, nine, zero, zero, six, eight, three, three. And once you call that number, you'll enter the ID and the passcode. The ID is eight, six, seven, nine, nine, eight, six, eight, two, one, six. And the passcode is seven, nine, six, four, seven, seven. And, uh, actually we do have a, a phone listener, uh, in the attendees at this time, so we will give, uh, that person permission to unmute um, and make the public comment.
Thank you. Perfect.
The last four digits on the phone number are seven, seven, four, nine. You have the floor.
Kevin, do you want to tell them how to unmute? They may not be familiar with how to unmute the phone.
Uh, yes, I believe in the, uh, when you call the phone number, there should be instructions on how to unmute. Those will play on the, uh, on the phone.
There we go.
I believe they are unmuted.
Hello, Tammy. If this is you, you're unmuted and let's see if we can hear you.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Tammy Eaton and I am the Director and Lead Teacher at Sandy Loom. Uh, we provide outdoor farm and garden curriculum for children from ages three to 10. We see around a hundred children a month here at the ranch. Um, in partnership with the city, we provide monthly walking field trips for local preschoolers, early relief day enrichment for elementary school children, summer camps, and fun and engaging, uh, events for families. Uh, we use the ranch house and the kitchen for education and the educational garden, as well as the chicken flock in our educational programming. I know that the existence of our rooster is up for discussion and I wanted to take this opportunity to give my input on why RJ is an important part of our flock and our educational program. Having the roosters teaches the children who visit the ranch about a complete flock and their role in it. It wouldn't be complete education to teach the children about chickens without having a rooster. They can see the differences in the hens and the roosters and observe his behavior and learn about his role in the flock. Roosters complete the natural order of the flock. The hens rely on them for protection. The roosters will guard the hens from predators, but keeping, by keeping them together and sounding an alarm if one approaches. They also defend them bodily against an attacker. And here on the ranch, we have fox, possums, skunks, raccoons, cats and raptors. They also will break up hen fights and find food to give to the hens. Um, it opens the discussion up with the public as well about hatching chickens or buying them at a store and planning ahead in case they were to get a rooster. It's a perfect opportunity to let them know about the illegal dumping of roosters at peats and the responsibility that they have, that they take on in starting a flock. Hens who have been around the rooster their whole lives will also take on the role of the rooster if the rooster is removed. And this includes crowing. Therefore, removing the rooster will not alleviate the issue of crowing. It will just take over, be taken over by the hens. RJ is a huge part of our flock and our program and we would not be the only ones who would be devastated to see him go if we had to rehome him. The children who visit our ranch would be, also be heartbroken. I hope that you take these points into consideration when making your vote. Thank you.
All right, Kevin, I'll check and see if we have any other public comment at this point or consent calendar comments.
Uh, there are no further hands at this time, so Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Well, I'll just briefly compliment, uh, Tammy, I think she made the case much easier for the rooster by Nate letting us know his name is RJ. Makes it a lot harder to have a problem, you know, the animal's name. So thank you for that. Uh, so we're going to move on and we have a consent calorie to deal with. Um, we have three items, A through C on the consent calendar tonight. And I'll ask first if any council member wishes to pull any item that's on the agenda, on the count, on the consent calendar. And I'm not seeing any hands jump up. Uh, if not, then I will look for a motion.
Move to, move to approve the consent calendar?
Second.
So we have a motion from the Vice Mayor and a second from Councilmember Sparks. If you could go to a roll call vote for consent, please.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. Thank you, everybody. So this brings us, um, to item 10, which is direction on future agenda items. And I'll just ask my colleagues if there's any direction tonight for future agenda items. And not seeing any of this particular meeting, we will move forward then to item 11, public hearings, and we'll jump right to 11B. And this is introduction of an ordinance to amend the city's land use code to create a verniff design standard for multifamily, mixed use and other private developments. And I'll ask if we can have our staff presentation and see if I've learned to pronounce that correctly or not.
Well, thank you, Mayor Landman. Uh, good evening, um, members of the council. Um, yeah, I had to do a lot of research and I think it's woonerf. I had to, you know, I, I went, uh, I went to the Netherlands. I checked it out. Um, so yes, you're all familiar with the, the concept because I know that you've seen it a few times before in front of you and now it's come back. Um, we're looking tonight at an ordinance to create these woonerf standards for new private multifamily and mixed use developments. So, and as you know, this is, the woonerf is a concept that, um, is from the Netherlands originally and it, and that's, in that case, it's generally applied to public streets. Uh, our proposal here is really concerned with the interior of private developments. And, um, I'd like to share with you the, the definition that we are working with. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm getting ahead of myself. Can I have the next slide, please? Then you, you can follow along. And I have some nice pictures. Here we go. So down at the bottom of this slide here, you'll see that, um, this is a definition that we're using in the proposed ordinance and I'll just read it to you here. A woonerf is an internal driveway within a development used as a multimodal, multi, multi-use shared space where priority is given to pedestrians and bicycles. Motor vehicles are considered guests in a woonerf and as such are subject to traffic calming and reduced speed limits in order to force drivers to reduce travel speeds and drive with caution so that all users feel welcome and safe. Next slide, please. So going through the background, which you'll be familiar with, um, we, we began our discussions, uh, regarding woonerfs in May of last year, where the woonerf was included as one of the options to meet the open space requirement in the proposed multifamily objective design standards. Uh, in June, uh, the planning commission voted to recommend those standards, including the woonerf option to the council. And in August and September of last year, the council, um, had a couple of different public hearings to discuss those objective design standards. And in September, um, uh, decided that the woonerf was, uh, such a, a compelling concept that the council was interested in taking it out of the multifamily objective design standards and applying it on its own to, uh, multifamily projects and asked staff to work on an ordinance, which accordingly they did. Next slide, please. Uh, and so that, um, that proposed ordinance, uh, version one came to the planning commission in November and the planning commission recommended it to the council. And in December, you all took a look at what was proposed and had a number of suggestions and revisions and room for improvement. And asked staff to come back to, uh, to work on that again. And so that brings us to, uh, this year, we have, um, staff has reviewed the ordinance, made, uh, changes in response to, um, your, uh, direction. And in September, the planning commission held a public hearing on the new, uh, draft and voted to recommend that, uh, to you for adoption. Uh, they have a couple of minor changes that they asked to be included, which we've incorporated and also asked the council to have some additional discussion on the topic of the transition zone, which is the area uh, between a public street and the actual entrance or exit from a woonerf. And I will get into that, um, that commentary from the planning commission a little bit later. Next slide, please. So stepping back to the direction that was given to staff by the council last December, um, there were three key, key concepts. One was to define the term internal driveway and require that all quiet qualifying internal driveways within a development, uh, are candidates for woonerfs. Uh, secondly, to remove the requirement of the minimum 100 square feet of woonerf per dwelling unit in favor of design standards that would maximize the amount of woonerf space in each new development. And finally, to ensure that woonerfs are not placed on driveways that accommodate heavy motor vehicle circulation from the perspective of pedestrian bicycle safety. Next slide, please. And even stepping back a little further and you're all old hands at the woonerf, but just to review for folks who might want a refresher. Um, the woonerf really incorporates sort of four primary principles, uh, visible entrances, uh, so that the users uh, of a woonerf really know that they have entered a multimodal space. And you can see on the right-hand side there, um, the little sign there, which is kind of iconic of, um, of the woonerf as a shared, uh, space. Uh, physical barriers to slow traffic down. And here you can see that there's sort of a meander and landscaping there to, um, kind of slow cars down a little bit. Uh, it's a shared and paved space, um, continuous paving, uh, without, without curb breaks. And, uh, landscaping and street furniture are typically present in a woonerf as well for comfort of the users. Next slide, please. And here's another example, kind of looking down from above. And here you can see some other, uh, aspects that are common in a woonerf. One is the, uh, meandering travel way, uh, to slow down motor vehicles, uh, plenty of landscaping, the views of parking as traffic calming. All right. So you can see there's a number of cars parked in that section there roadway, um, street furniture and lighting. And really the, the, the sort of the sum result of all of this is the creation of a series of outdoor living rooms essentially that, uh, are usable by nearby residents. Next slide, please. And one last example, just because it's so lovely. Of course, this one doesn't have the meander, but you can see how narrow that street is. Uh, this is obviously not the United States. This is, this is in Europe somewhere. All right. Next slide, please. Okay. So getting into the, the big changes from what we've seen, what you saw last December, um, uh, they, you know, so changes based on your direction. Um, we have in this new version, uh, added the definition of internal driveway, uh, which is a private driveway, accessway, driving aisle, street, lane or alley within a single development that provides motor vehicular access to that development's structures, parking areas and other features or amenities. So really it's a pretty broad definition. Uh, further, uh, we have included that all internal driveways are candidates for woonerfs, uh, with the goal of maximizing the amount of woonerf space within a given with the goal of maximizing the amount of Vurnaf space within a given development. So, previously, this, the proposed standard was a minimum of 100 square feet per dwelling unit. You know, we heard pretty clearly from the council that that might create some unintended consequences in terms of too much pavement or maybe not enough Vurnaf. Maybe the developers would try to hit that 100 square feet and no more. So, we've revamped the standards to really go for just maximizing the amount of Vurnaf within the development and all of the design standards within the ordinance kind of feed into that. Further, no Vurnaf's will be placed on driveways with heavy traffic. And we're defining that as more than 100 motor vehicle trips during the evening peak hour. And finally, the design should reduce the occurrence of those heavy traffic driveways and cut through traffic through a development to and thereby maximize the opportunities for Vurnaf. So, we're really going to be kind of challenging developers to design superior projects that, that will create these, these Vurnaf spaces. Okay, next slide, please. Okay, so I'm just going to step through the actual standards cribbing from the language of the ordinance itself. Each Vurnaf will be required to feature a clear and distinctive entrance and exit. And that will include signage, a change in the pavement surfacing, traffic calming features to slow down the traffic as they enter. I want to note that permeable surfacing of the Vurnaf is, is okay. There's been some, some discussion about whether the Vurnaf might drive further paving or more asphalt. And I just wanted, I wanted to clarify that permeable paving is called out as, you know, as an option within the ordinance, if a developer wanted to go that way. The Vurnaf's, each Vurnaf will require this transition zone, which is 20 feet from a standard roadway of, between the Vurnaf entry and the intersection with the, the street. So, for an arterial, that's 60 feet. And so, we're talking about Old Redwood Highway 116 in East Catati are essentially the arterials in Catati. And so, the Vurnaf would be required to not begin until at least 60 feet from the, the, those kind of streets. And that allows the cars that are entering to reduce their speed, to stack vehicles in the event that there's some sort of an obstruction in the Vurnaf. You know, child's falling off its bicycle or something. And to allow for emergency vehicle access into the Vurnaf. The speed limit would be posted at eight miles per hour in each Vurnaf. One or two-way traffic would be a possibility, depending on the design. Each Vurnaf would need to be in close proximity to entrances to the residential units and to common areas within the community to the extent possible. Traffic calming measures would be placed no less than 100 feet apart. And previously, that was 160 feet. So, we're pushing the, the livability here by, by suggesting the placement of traffic calming at a 100 feet apart instead, a little closer. The minimum length of a Vurnaf is, will be 60 feet in order to incorporate all of those different pieces that are required. The previously, a maximum length was proposed, but we've eliminated that. In looking at all of the different design standards that are proposed, what will probably happen, we believe is that the design will dictate how lengthy the Vurnaf can be. All right, so, we're not so concerned about the maximum length at this point. Okay, next slide, please. The width of a Vurnaf may vary, however, with the minimum motor vehicle travel at, space at 13 feet. So, minimum 13 feet for the cars to pass through. And we're newly added the idea of having vehicle passing bays so that in the case of a two-way Vurnaf, the roadway can be, or the, the vehicle travel space can be narrower because there'll be these passing bays for cars to be able to get by each other. And they won't necessarily need to pass side by side at all points in the Vurnaf. Each Vurnaf will incorporate seating, landscaping, decorative pavement, and other pedestrian and decorative amenities along the full length and eliminate the continuous curb. We're also adding the requirement that seating be placed at least 100 feet, every 100 feet within the Vurnaf. Bicycle parking will be provided within the Vurnaf to code and per the bike head plan. An intermittent motor vehicle parking within the Vurnaf is also permitted, needs to be placed at least 35 feet from the entrances in order to avoid any conflicts with vehicles entering into the Vurnaf space with a car that's trying to park. And as always, emergency vehicle access will need to be approved by the fire marshal for each, each development. Next slide, please. So, the Planning Commission had a good discussion about these standards and they did recommend council approval. They requested specifically two minor changes, which I've included in the draft ordinance that's before you tonight. One was the addition of the word lane to the definition of internal driveway, just to make sure that we didn't miss anything in, in that definition. So, we're expanding on that idea of a driveway, accessway, driving aisle, street, or alley. Now, we're including lane. Previously, we had the eight mile per hour speed limit applying to motor vehicles and bicycles. It was pointed out by the commissioners that it is entirely possible that some wheel vehicles besides those could also go that fast. And so, we are applying the speed limit to any wheeled vehicle or device within the Vurnaf for safety purposes. In addition, the Planning Commission raised the concern that these, the proposed 60-foot transition zone from arterials might be excessive. And that it might result in additional pavement that would be unnecessary otherwise, reduced area of Vurnaf overall. And the opportunity for drivers to actually accelerate so that after making the turn off of the arterial, seeing a 60-foot distance in front of them, they might actually accelerate, which obviously is not desirable. In discussing it afterwards, so, so the Planning Commission requested that the council discuss this. Okay, in, in talking about it afterward, the staff is continuing to support the 60-foot standard, believing that it gives drivers the time to slow down. It really allows important vehicle stacking so that we don't have vehicles sticking back out into the arterial and blocking the sidewalk or the vehicle travel lanes and to facilitate the emergency vehicle access into the Vurnaf, you know, the fire truck. But, to clarify the nature of that transition zone, we revised the draft ordinance following the meeting with the Planning Commission to include, to stipulate that the transition zone needs to be designed to slow down the traffic and to alert drivers to the upcoming Vurnaf. So, signage will be included in that transition zone. And the transition zone itself will, will still be narrowed with landscaping or other, other traffic calming measures to help drivers know they should not be accelerating as they're approaching the Vurnaf. So, that, that is our take on it and we're hoping the council will, you know, have some discussion about that if they're, if they're interested in revisiting that standard. Next slide, please. That brings me to our recommendation. The Planning Commission and the Community Development Department recommend that the city council introduce an ordinance that would allow for the development and regulation of Vurnaf's as part of certain new private development projects. And with that, I am available to answer your questions.
Well, let's jump right over. Thank you, first of all, for that. And we'll see if we have any questions right off the bat from the council. I'm not seeing any hands jump up, I'm just seeing faces deep in thought. So, while they're doing that, I, I do have one question for you, Ms. Bus. Internal driveways that accommodate heavy motor vehicular circulation being defined as more than 100 motor vehicle trips during the afternoon or the evening peak hour, I could certainly see why we would want to have them not subject to the Vurnaf requirement. I'm curious, can you give me any examples off, just offhand? Have any internal driveways that match or exceed that? I'm having a hard time picturing a internal driveway for a living area with that many cars, but that's, you know, I've never really looked at it. Do we have any examples of that? Is that something we might typically even see come to us in a design?
I don't think it's that likely. I do have one to share with you, let me see if I can find it here. So, the, so that standard comes, it's, it's a, it's a common standard I've seen for other Vurnaf's. It's, it shows up, if you, if you do the Vurnaf reading, there's some, some folks who study this, Bruce Appleyard and I forget the first name, another guy, Mr. Cox. And they set forth that standard in their literature review of Vurnaf's. Just as an example, the Catati Village Project, which is proposed at 177 units of housing. The traffic study indicates that that project will generate 79 trips, motor vehicle trips per day. And so, you know, 177 units is a pretty good sized project. And, you know, it, it is not likely. I think that we would see projects that would be significantly larger than that that would be generating that 100 vehicular trips a day. And in fact, it, it could likely be less. And one of the things that, you know, that we're really looking at with this too is putting the onus back on the developer to design a project such that there's minimal traffic that would need to be diverted onto a driveway that becomes a Vurnaf. You know, to really design the project in a creative way to, you know, spread the traffic out, perhaps.
Good, I, I think that gives me a much better picture and, and I agree with you. It seems likely, it's something we're going to have to visit. I, I certainly hope we don't have a project of the nature that would trigger this here. That might be inappropriate for a town this small. But at any rate, that, that does make sense to have in there. So, last question, I believe for me. And I think we've been over this, so forgive me if I've already asked about this, but it mentions that permeable pavement is allowed. And I get the reason for that and support it. Anything that helps recharge is a good thing. But I know I've learned in the last few years that there's a concern that permeable pavement tends to be something that gets clogged through just the natural dirt that applies over time and doesn't fulfill its function. And I noticed that all the Vurnaf's are required to have landscaping. Would we not perhaps get better recharge just by, with the required landscaping, requiring it to be essentially little mini swales to facilitate recharge?
Mm-hmm, yes, absolutely. And I think that, again, the developer will come to us with a concept and we will work with the developer to figure out what's going to work best for that development and what fits best with our standards. So, you know, if we find that, you know, that, that maybe using the permeable pavers, if they're not committed to maintenance or, you know, or it's going to be problematic from a drainage perspective, you know, then we would certainly be encouraging them to go another way. And they'd be looking at the long haul too, in terms of maintenance.
Yep, I, I would.
Yeah, and same with the landscaping, you know, if, if they're, if looking at our, our Welo standards, if, you know, there's something different that should be happening besides, you know, permeable pavers and copious landscaping, you know, swales might be more suited, suited to the, to that spot. Then, you know, I think that each project is going to kind of be its own animal in terms of how the Vurnaf develops. And, you know, we'll be applying the standards to come up with the best product in terms of.
And so, we will be requiring maximal recharge where it's possible. And I'm comfortable myself personally, which whatever works out best for the project. But we will be seeing that, I understand that, correct?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you. All right, well, I see a hand first from the Vice Mayor and then I'll go to Councilmember Ford after that. So, please go ahead, Vice Mayor Harvey.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Just as a follow-on to that question, is it considered part of the housing development responsibility for maintenance of these? They're not considered part of the public streets that we would have to have a different methodology if we were to use permeable paving? Is it, say, like HOA, is it their responsibility for that maintenance?
Yes, yes, absolutely. The Vurnaf's may only be, through this ordinance, Vurnaf's may only be on private property. And they will remain in private property and the maintenance and, you know, ongoing upkeep will fall to the property owner.
Okay, thank you. I just didn't want to have to add another set of tools and things to poor public works to have to maintain something, you know, a little bit different than they're, than they're used to maintaining. So, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly, Councilmember Ford?
Thanks, two questions. The first is about, have you, have you looked into ADA interactions with this kind of street that doesn't have a continuous curb? And how, how you sort of alert people to the fact that they're entering a, you know, alert, say, sight impaired people to the fact that they're entering a vehicle travel space and things like that? I just don't know if the ADA implications have come up.
They have not. I mean, we do, we do need, when we look at each project, we do need to, we need to look at ADA standards, particularly in relation to the building, the site plan, in terms of accessibility throughout the parking areas and whatnot. So, that would be the case in the Vurnaf as well. As far as specific accessibility within the Vurnaf, I, I think that the continuous curb could be helpful because then we won't have the need for curb cuts and it should all be navigable, you know, for those who have, who might be in a chair or have mobility challenges. But as far as the notification and that you're entering a different space, that's a very good question. And we may, you know, we may want to make sure that as we are working with developers on their applications, that we pay, pay really special attention to what the application of the ADA standards is going to be in the Vurnaf to make sure that we don't miss anything.
Okay, thanks. Yeah, I think that the people who make those yellow dot pavers are going to do well in Vurnaf's. The second question was about the design to maximize Vurnaf space. And I'm, I'm, that sounds to me like it brings up the same issues that the 100-foot, 100-square-foot minimum did, which is, are we telling people to give more space to cars? Like, that sounds like maximize Vurnaf potentially at the expense, at the expense of green open space or something like that. Like, how do we, how does the proposed ordinance sort of handle maximize Vurnaf space within whatever's required to park your cars, not, not, you know, create more space for, for cars?
Right. Well, so, the Vurnaf concept is applied to these internal driveways to the extent that a development has them. So, you know, we may find that within certain developments, there is not even enough internal driveway available to, to create a Vurnaf based on the standards. In which case, the developer would need to do something else or would be, end up being exempt from these requirements. I also, I want to point out that we do have that provision within the ordinance that if a developer proposes another concept that is comparable or even better, that they may propose that and that could be approved as part of the approval process. And that would include parking all along the periphery, as you see, and the co-housing or clustering the parking or some sort of, you know, some superior amount of open space that is available to residents within the project. So, that if a Vurnaf is not necessarily going to be, you know, the best solution for a project, we may be able to work with the developer to come up with something else. And hope, you know, would certainly be, you know, the staff's feeling that we wouldn't necessarily be creating Vurnaf just for the sake of paved areas within a development.
Great, thanks. Can I, Mayor, can I ask one more? I remembered one of them. It's, so, with a push for our standards to be more and more objective, I, you know, say, say, an affordable development comes along. And so, are you confident that this, this design standard for Vurnaf is objective enough that we can? Like, I'm concerned about phrases like "designed to achieve as much Vurnaf as possible" and things like that. So, I, I just don't know if you've thought about how that fits with object, objectivity?
Mm-hmm. Well, within the, the ordinance, the standards are very specific. And so, you know, and I, I did, I did some exercises or I took, you know, some, some plans, even of some of the existing developments within the town as well as some of the more recently proposed projects that are, you know, have applied for permits. And kind of sketched it out and looked at what, you know, what might be achievable. And, you know, we're feeling pretty confident that these standards can be applied in such a way that they're not, that, that they're clear enough to understand, clear enough to implement, that they can be considered to be objective.
Great, thanks.
All right, thank you, Mr. Ford. I'm not seeing any further questions at this time. So, let's go from the public hearing and see if we have any comment from the public.
Thank you, Mayor Lammon. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Jenny Blaker, please go ahead. Jenny Blaker, please go ahead.
Hi, yes, thank you. Jenny Blaker here. Um, just two points. One would be, it seems, um, it would be really important to prioritize the safety of children, pedestrians, bicyclists, skateboarders, wheelchairs, scooters, et cetera, um, whenever possible. So whatever design standards in terms of the entrance from the street can be made to ensure that the, um, that those, those, uh, more vulnerable people are safe from cars. That seems to be the priority. And also I would echo, um, Councilmember Ford's, Ford's, um, concern. When I read the part about maximizing the amount of Wooner space, I hope that doesn't in any way compete with or conflict with things like parks, gardens, children's play areas, um, and other safer dedicated spaces that where vehicles don't go at all. That's my comments. Thank you very much.
Neil Hancock, please go ahead.
Yes, yes. Hello, Council. Um, am I coming through?
Yes.
I think I'm. Thank you. Yes. So, um, I, uh, as a member of the Council, uh, the Planning Commission, I am sort of talking to, um, some of the items that came up. I did check with Chair Lemus if she was okay in representing this. Um, particularly, I'd like to say that I think this is, uh, much better than where it was before. Um, my own personal experience in riding around Katati and moving around Katati is we have some fairly narrow streets and sections of town. So we do have, uh, a history of having some very, um, Wooner-like features. And I think this tries to encapsulate that. But particularly off Materi Circle, if you walk around there, there's two access roads at the back that are, um, twelve foot six inches. So they're actually less than the current standards for what we've got. So we've got some examples around Katati of where we have the roads. Um, this ordinance speaks specifically to multifamily homes. We're not talking about single family homes. And I certainly hope that this, anybody doing a design could use this as well, um, to, um, uh, in the future, if they have, um, single family homes, to make it safer on the private streets that are there. Um, on the sixty-foot side of from Ontario Highway, I would point out that we're going from, if we have a local road, we're going up to twenty-five miles an hour and we're having twenty feet transition zone. If we go a little bit higher, we're on an Ontario Road at thirty miles an hour or thirty-five miles an hour. And suddenly we're compensating for the vehicles. Yet again, we're compensating for the vehicles of the, the vehicles may slow down or be allowed to slow down. And being in parts of town, there are confident drivers, let's say, who don't slow down for these locations. So I think we really want to design that will require the vehicle to slow down as it enters. Now, on Greenleaf Lane and also Katati Lane, which do aggressively neck, they aren't strictly in the same sort of category as this, but they aggressively neck. And I measured one at twenty-six feet and the other at thirty feet. So, um, and I've posted pictures of this, so you can actually calibrate as to what it looks like. Um, it should be that for, uh, for any sort of, um, emergency access, it would be the same on any of these types of, of features. So we have these examples already in town. And I would ask you to consider reducing that entrance off an arterial to thirty feet, um, instead of sixteen feet. So good ordinance, good to see it happening. Thank you very much.
Lori Ann Barber, please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I want to, I guess, echo both a little bit of what Jenny said and Neil said. I, I'm glad to hear that the, uh, well, first off, I, this is an exciting concept and I'm glad that the city is taking this up and looking at it. Um, so thank you for that. And, um, but I also want to speak to the sixty feet. I, I spoke with Neil and I, I tend to agree with him that, that seems maybe like an excessive amount of transition. Um, also because I think, you know, East Katati, we have a lot of housing on East Katati. And so it seems like a likely place where there could be a Wooner off the street. And sixty feet, uh, anyway, I'm looking forward to the council discussing this because it seems, um, to give more, uh, space to the cars again, as opposed to the pedestrians and children playing and all of that. Um, so I think that's it. And I just wanted, again, to say, uh, appreciate the city working on this and bringing something new that could be beneficial to residents. Thank you.
Mayor Landman, that will end the public comment.
All right. In that case, let's close the public hearing and we'll bring it back to the council. So it opened up to discussion. Obviously, we need to discuss the transition zone and see where we'd like to go with that. And anything else that the council, of course, would like to bring up. So let's see, the first hand I saw was Mr. Ford, followed by Laura. We'll go in that order, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so as you know, I like to copy other cities when, when I can find things. And it, I really, uh, it seems like we're kind of on the cutting edge in the U.S. here and talking about this. So, um, I, uh, I appreciate, um, Ms. Buss's work in putting all this together because it didn't, it seems like she doesn't have a lot to, uh, a lot of examples to work with. So, um, I think it's important we get this right because other people are likely to copy us. Um, the transition zone to me, I, I, I think the ordinance is great. Um, the, the only thing I actually want to talk about is that sixty-foot transition zone off of arterials. And I get the slowing, slowing cars down argument, but that's, I think that should primarily be accomplished by the method of getting off of the arterial. So most of those places along East Katati where people turn off of East Katati, for instance, they have to make a sharp right turn and that slows them down. The one, one, uh, non-example of that is Materi Circle, I think, has a very wide entry. And people can kind of pull in there just like they're exiting a freeway. So, so that's an example of a spot where I think the entrance was, was misdesigned and allowed cars to, to cross the sidewalk at too high a speed and thus perhaps need sixty feet to slow down. But if the, if the turn off of the arterial is properly designed, I think they're already way slowed down by the time they cross the sidewalk and are, uh, approaching, you know, where this potential entrance would be. So I would like to see that number of sixty feet reduced to more like forty. Um, but, uh, the stacking onto the arterial, if we're, if we're talking less than, you know, I, I mean, even a large development, we're talking maybe seventy, seventy-nine, uh, trips an hour. That's not going to lead to a lot of stacking. Um, so that doesn't worry me too much. Um, and, and if we needed a little space for stacking, we could create turn lanes on the arterial to stack before you turn into the arterial. So, I mean, turn into the Wooner. So, um, that, that's the only chunk of it that I would, you know, raise an issue with. Otherwise, I think it's great. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, I'm really excited about this ordinance. I think I, I, I hope Councilmember Ford, I hope that, uh, he's correct, that others will copy us. That'd be a great outcome. Um, I had just three comments. Uh, one really quick, uh, I just found a typo on page one sixteen under the location of the Wooner. Um, it says, "with the exception of except for", it's just an extra exception in there. Um, I share, uh, the concern that was expressed earlier about the maximum Wooner size. Um, I'm sorry, the, uh, maximizing, the language about maximizing the size. I would love to see it say something, I, I'm not a great writer, but something along the lines of, um, within paved areas that it, in the project, maximize the proportion of paved area that is a Wooner, something like that, so that it's clear that we're not trying to maximize the overall amount of road and internal driveway. We're just, of the internal driveways that exist, we're maximizing how much of them are Wooner. Um, and I'd love to hear, uh, staff's ideas if, if there's a workable way to do, to do the language on that. And then, uh, my last comment was, uh, about the transition zone. Um, I, I, it was interesting to bring up Materi Circle because I was just looking at that myself and saw that, uh, sixty feet off of the arterial is on somebody's porch in their house. So you have to slow down within sixty feet to get into there or you'll end up, um, somebody's house. So, um, I think I tend to agree that maybe sixty feet is a little excessive and I would be comfortable with forty feet instead. Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any comment from, or from anybody else at this time? Vice Mayor Harvey.
Well, I'll throw my two cents worth then. Yeah, I'm kind of excited about this. Oftentimes, you know, the projects, you know, like the one, um, on East Katati Avenue, um, and with like Lipton. You know, it's kind of so sad to see just this, uh, pavement of, you know, garages and, and, uh, pavement. This would have been so much nicer for those folks to have something like this. So I, I too am very excited. Um, I agree with, uh, Councilmember Ford on, in particular, o- on the streets off of East Katati. I mean, all of those, um, they're pretty sharp right turns. So people generally, um, have to stop. When I think of all the apartment complexes and all the little developments like on, um, you know, Bay Tree and Greenleaf and all of those, they're, they're a real sharp turn. Um, even like Breen and, and the condos down a little bit farther, closer to the train station. So I think that people generally coming off of those, because it, it's, it's a sharp right angle, um, are already slowing down for that. So I, I like the suggestion made by Councilmember Ford of, of maybe going with something like forty feet. So those are my two cents.
Right. Thank you, Vice Mayor. I, I'll expand by saying, yeah, I heard the term this, this was exciting and I tend to agree with that. Uh, I'm going to thank Mr. House and his staff for actually finding this and bringing it to us. Uh, and apologize for expanding into something much larger than he may have originally anticipated. But I think it's a good result because I think as Councilmember Ford pointed out, we may be on the cutting edge in this one. And I think it's that wonderful combination of something that makes a better living space for people. While at the same time, it can be done as relatively cost effectively as possible for a developer. So it works in both ways that everybody involved in building homes, cities and developers could look at it. It's a good thing. Um, as far as the issue at hand, you know, when I first heard that and looked at it, I had that first thought. Sixty feet seemed like a long distance to me. And I was concerned about removing space from people for more space for cars. So I just went and did a little very rough, uh, Google searching as how long is the average car? How many can we stack in, in sixty feet? And obviously, I think everybody knows it's about roughly fifteen feet is the average for a car that's planned. You could stack four cars pretty comfortably probably. That doesn't seem to be a lot of cars that for some reason there's a holdup that's blocking access off the road. Uh, then I looked at stopping distances. Okay, how long do you need to stop if you're coming at, uh, various speeds? Because we have a few different roads. You might be coming at different speeds off these. And I'm sure there's a lot of different standards. I'll just say this is a, a rough estimate. But we're sub several, I read, kind of co-listed in that twenty miles per hour. You need an average overhaul stopping distance of forty feet. At thirty, the overall stopping distance is seventy-five feet. And at forty miles per hour, well, you need a lot more, a hundred and twenty. So that tells me that I thought that sixty might not be that far off, even though it sounded bad to me. And I, I want to be clear, we're not talking about making more space for cars here. We're talking about making this safe for kids and families and people to sit because that's the difference here. I think when we go to look at existing, uh, multifamily homes in Katati and assess this, it's different because these are areas which are designed and everybody is completely used to that this is roadway. You are pulling off the road, you are driving through this to a parking space or your home or a garage, something like that. There may be occasionally kids or passengers there, but the expectation, this is for the cars. Whereas we're dropping people into a whole new ballgame. You're reducing to eight miles per hour. This is a space that's primarily for people and kids to play out in the streets like many used to when I was much younger. Um, and that's a different thing. So I could go along with the council at forty, but I'd have to hear from staff first to respond to some of the things we put forward and if they feel that forty is workable. Uh, because I was comfortable leaving at sixty, although I, I understand the concerns why I'd want to minimize this. And the last thought I wanted to share, I hear the concern, I, I don't think we have a problem though about the language related to maximizing it. What we're saying, as I understand it, is we're asking you to maximize the vernos to the planned internal driveways, to the necessary driveways that are always in every single project. Not to maximize the driveways in a project. And I'm not sure if there's any financial advantage that I can think of at least readily offhand for a developer to expand driveways. Um, especially vernos driveways, pretty cheap to make compared to some of the other things. I, 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 I don't know. So just leave you with that thought. But we've all had a chance to comment. I wonder if staff could give us some feedback, Mr. House and Ms. Buss, about the comments and see what you think might be workable and maybe the council can see where we're at.
Thank you, Mayor.
Would you like to start?
Yeah. Um, so, uh, yeah, so I think that, um, you know, one of the, one of the challenges here is that we're looking at, um, arterials. Uh, when in reality, perhaps East Katati, um, not all arterials are built the same, right? So East Katati, uh, may be substantially different from, you know, the experience that you have driving on, uh, on Old Redwood Highway and, uh, one sixteen. So that is definitely something, you know, worth considering, I think, in this case. Um, uh, I will say that, you know, we had looked at it in terms of the sixty feet as being maybe not four vehicles, maybe three. I think our, our primary concern is, um, is really making sure the vehicles have time to slow down and, and the emergency vehicle access. And one of, so when, when we, when we go through these projects, um, you know, the fire marshal will kind of have the final say. And so, you know, we'll, we'll need to make sure that a larger fire truck can be accommodated within the Wooner um, and deployed quickly, right? So it may be that the fire truck doesn't want to come all the way into the Wooner. Maybe it will stop within that transition zone. We just want to make sure that we are covered there. Um, but, um, I'm not really sure that our trucks are that long. Um, so I'm going to defer to, um, Director House to see if he wants to add some more thoughts to that.
Yeah, absolutely. So I, I just will, first of all, I give credit, uh, to, uh, Autumn and, um, consulting planner Joel Galbraith, who was here for coming up with this idea and then proposing and running with it. It was all our staff. Uh, and I'm very much thankful to the council for supporting the idea and, and pushing us to make the ordinance as good as it can be and the community. Um, so the, the whole point of that stopping distance is safety. You know, this is a new concept. Uh, folks in the United States aren't really used to this idea. I think some people are going to draw, you know, pull off of, of these arterial, arterial roads and, and kind of be a little bit, it'll be a learning process for new folks entering that area. So that's the whole goal of that kind of transition zone. And to Councilmember Ford's point, that transition zone does come from one of the uh, only Wooner ordinances that we could find. I believe that one comes from Anchorage, Alaska's ordinance. Um, so we did not have the, um, benefit of a traffic engineer providing input on this ordinance. And so to that point, we are looking for, um, some examples on what that safety distance would be. Um, you know, I absolutely hear the, the comments from the Planning Commission and the community. Um, but, you know, safety, we're just, because it's so new. Uh, I think one, one way to address that might be to reduce it by ten feet and go with fifty. I think that would address some of the stopping distance, um, that Mayor Landman pointed out, that, that our documented information that we can get, maybe reduce it a little bit to, um, address some of the other points. And, uh, we do have the benefit of our city manager being a, uh, city engineer in his past. And so he may want to add some comments to that. I'll see if the city manager has anything he'd like to add first, or to come back to the council.
Well, I don't have anything magical, but I, it may be helpful. Um, so just for reference, um, I believe the fire trucks, like your typical fire trucks are about forty feet long.
Yeah.
Um, and, and that, that isn't the crazy, like, you know, big ladder trucks. That's your kind of normal fire truck. Um, and for some local reference, since we are talking a lot about East Katati, Lipton Way, um, that's about from the, kind of the face of curb on East Katati to the, the alleyway. the alleyway, you know, roughly midpoint in the alleyways, about seventy feet. Um so maybe that gives you some frame of reference for like what sixty feet might be. So that's that's seventy feet, that section right there. Da Quisto is um Da Quisto, again, from the face of curb on East Catati to sort of the the first edge of the first house's driveway is about forty feet. Um actually, I if, I mean, can you actually uh can I hear Green's request? All right. So you can see um this is what I was talking about. This is Lipton here in East Catati. About seventy feet from this face of this curb to the um not just basically the alleyway here. It gives you kind of a frame of reference. And then here's another one um on Da Quisto, just down the way. Again, face a curb, face of this curb to um this edge of the driveway, first house, that's about forty feet. So your typical fire truck is gonna pull in and you need to want to get out of that, out of East Catati for sure. That physical space guy in East Catati, just a little bit of space would probably be a probably be recommended. Um but I think as projects come in, they would have to be um I'm as as a as Noah said, you're gonna have a traffic engineer and you're also gonna have Rancho Adobe Fire Districts providing input on what they think they need there uh if it gets that close to arterial. And 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 it is a minimum, you know, that what's in the code is a minimum. So that would just be the starting point for a conversation. It could be potentially um a little bit longer, you know, if if it's required by a traffic engineer or Rancho Adobe. So I guess that's just a a long way of saying that forty feet is the is basically just would just fit a fire truck. Um so probably be, it might, in my opinion, it might be a little better to it'd be better to be a little bit bigger than that. Um they know I was suggesting fifty feet. Um that might be, that would probably be a little bit better. Sixty feet, I don't know if that's necessary, but it can always get longer if it's needed for safety reasons. Longer than fifty.
So uh s- since you've gone to fire department stuff, I'm gonna jump in for a second if I might, right? Start calling on the council. Uh certainly not the uh fire marshal here and definitely nothing magical, but I can tell you a couple of things that I do know in practice. City manager and staff are correct. If there's a working fire, heaven forbid, in one of these buildings, given the narrowness of a vernor, a a fire truck probably isn't going to pull all the way down there. They will park a little outside and extend lines down there. But they will get comfortably close. And some of the things I want you to think about is, yes, you have a forty foot vehicle, but it's just not the vehicle. Number one, usually they've picked up a height, which means rather large four or five inch hose going either into the back or the side or potentially the front of the unit. That takes some space for that to turn. It can't be turned on a dime. It's rather large. Then the next thing often for fire attack is they will be pulling hose lines off and extending them and going accessing whether it's a ways down the vernor or perhaps going immediately right or left. But that usually can add another ten fifteen feet. So I could live with fifty. Uh I would be very uncomfortable with forty because I don't think it serves that function. Um and given that this is a new thing and we want it to work and it's new to the American public, I think the extra ten feet might be well worth it if my colleagues agree. Uh that's all I wanted to put forth. So I'm gonna go right to Councilmember Ford because I see his hand up.
Thanks, Mayor Landman. Um I could certainly live with the fifty. I'm I'm fine with that. I and I and I had a thought in thinking about the other two arterials that I think most of our design standards don't want private driveways to come right off of those arterials anyway, right? We we produce, we we have them build other streets for the for the housing to load off of. So I'm I'm skeptical that this will be a big issue except along uh East Catati. I mean, correct me if I'm wrong though on this, but my my perception is we intend for housing developments to to load onto other streets that would then feed into the those two arterials.
Well, I do I do see uh for because the majority of those arterial oriented properties are going to be for mixed use and multifamily housing, which you generally you generally do enter into a private drive aisle of some type. Uh so I do see some potential for it to be there. Um it's not going to be public streets primarily on these, generally just given the size of the parcels we have and the types of projects we we're gonna get on those larger streets, I believe.
So that those those parcels north of one sixteen, south of Lowe's, those would all be private streets in there?
So the the projects, we have projects in right now. We're looking at them and right now, nothing is proposed as a public street. We're kind of having discussion. Maybe the West Catati realignment might be um just because it's gonna provide public access to a park. But it's still being discussed.
Got it. Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I I will say too on Highway one sixteen, um you know, we're actively trying to consolidate access points versus nada. So to the extent that we can do that, we try to do that in developments.
All right. I'll ask if there's any further comment or questions from the council. I see a hand from Councilmember Sparks. Go ahead.
Thank you. Uh just the same comment as before, uh but I was hoping to get a staff uh perspective on, is there a way to clarify the wording uh regarding that we're not trying to maximize overall vernor square footage, but just as a proportion of the paved internal driveways?
Yes. Oh, so I I apologize that that may have missed my attention earlier for response. Yes. Um I was thinking that um you know, that perhaps we could add uh just a little caveat there in that section that says um, you know, to the to the extent that um additional driveway area within the development is not increased as a result of the Woner requirements. So if you guys want to wordsmith that a little bit, but I can write on, you know, try writing that down.
I think I think that would be that would be great. And and um as uh Mayor Landman said, it maybe it's not necessary, but I it would make me feel more comfortable if we just clarified it a little bit.
And I'll just push again, perhaps we could simply say maximize, we're asking to maximize vernos to the planned and necessary eternal driveway and not asking to maximize driveways. Yeah, because I because I agree, that is the concept. We want to make sure it's clear, clarity, it's never bad. Councilmember Ford?
Um I I liked your wording there. I want to I want to be careful not to give developers a way to say well, if I make it a one earth, then I have to build in some some seating and that's going to take away a parking space. So now I need more more space, right? I I mean, there is a there is a if we if we say without increasing driveway space at all that that could give away to say, well, then there's no way to build a one earth. And so I I ju- I think it takes a little care to phrase it. It currently says internal driveways shall be designed to maximize the total one or square footage to create additional amenities. Um yeah, I'm not sure the right phrase.
Well, we've had a few good suggestions. We have directed staff to see if they can clarify that a little further. I think we're not in a bad place to start. Perhaps we can agree to just let staff further clarify that. I think we've given them pretty of direction, even if we haven't hit on the magic combination of words just yet. I'm seeing some nodding heads to that. Anything further from the council tonight on this? If not, that I'd be happy to see somebody move adoption of the resolution. Councilmember Ford, I see your hand.
I move adoption of the resolution with the understanding that the transition zone for arterials will change to fifty feet and with appropriate rewording of the maximize one earth space clause.
Ford? Do we have a second? And a second from the Vice Mayor? All right, if we could have, can I see Mr. Barker has his hand up? Please go ahead, Mr. Barker.
Mr. Mayor, just to clarify, the 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 motion was to uh adopt the resolution, but I think I think the intention is to introduce the ordinance, correct?
Excuse me, that is correct.
Introduce the ordinance, you're right. I said introduce resolution, but there is no resolution. Adopt uh introduce the ordinance. Thank you.
And I'm sure the Vice Mayor is going to accept that amendment?
Yes.
Pretty darn sure of that. Thank you, Mr. Barker. Now for sure, we will go and see if we can have a roll call vote.
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes. All right, we have Vuners in Catati. Uh it's a very good thing. Thank you, everybody, and thank you, staff. So this leads us now to our regular agenda. And the first is item A. And this is public consideration of the draft six cycle housing element during the thirty day public review period. And I'm gonna go to the staff report, but I do want to point out that this is agenda item is essentially notification to the public of the opening of the comment period. We can or of course intend to and can take comments from the public and the council considering make comments. But this isn't the final adjudication of this issue tonight. This will go to the state first, then it comes back to planning commission and ask for that final review. So I just wanted to clarify that. If I think it's obvious from the staff report, but I thought it would be good to clarify it. So with that, I'll ask if we can have our staff presentation.
Uh thank you, Mayor Landman, uh members of the council. Uh just really quick, as my PowerPoint comes up, I wanted to to touch on the kind of innovative ordinances that we've been doing here at staff or here in Catati. Our staff have the um the benefit of attending the American Planning Association uh conference uh just last week in Anaheim. It was the first one they've held in three years. It was really exciting. Uh one of our planning commissioners was able to get down and attend with us. Uh but I had asked uh Senior Planner John Paul Harrys to help me present the cottage housing ordinance because I did think that was a fairly innovative ordinance that would be well received for some of the other small and medium sized cities. And we presented the standing room only crowd. So it was very well received. And I've already pitched a presentation for next year's uh conference to um Associate Planner Autumn Bus. So uh Vuners will be spreading throughout the state if we can do anything about it. And getting into my presentation, as the mayor identified, this is the uh introduction and um of the draft uh twenty twenty-three housing element update for the thirty day public review and comment period. Uh no actions being taken. The intent of this presentation is just to highlight uh highlight that the draft is available for public review and that we would really appreciate hearing from the public uh on the draft document. We'll go to the next slide. So just to give some background, you know, since really two thousand seventeen, the state legislature has really been changing housing and planning laws affecting the development process. Um touch, you know, they've changed our application processes, Housing Accountability Act made uh some by right processes that uh take exempt process or housing projects from SEQA. Um you know, that we cannot downzone properties anymore. Uh there's inclusionary requirements, ADUs, as you all are well aware, you've been uh kind of on the cutting edge of the all those laws with us. Uh but in two thousand nineteen, we started trying to talk about these things to the community and the council. And some of you were able to attend our housing workshop that we presented in two thousand nineteen, October. Uh almost three years ago today, I think it's three years ago tomorrow to the day that we had that uh that workshop. And then we did a survey just to hear from people about what the their housing needs and goals were in the community, knowing that we were gonna be moving to into this process and just how many changes were kind of in the mix. Um we did some additional surveys uh over, you know, that winter, the I'm sorry, the falling winter. Uh and then in twenty twenty, the the fall of twenty twenty, we really got into the Rena process and then got our Rena allocation granted to us. And then we formally kicked off the uh housing element update one year ago tomorrow. Uh and we've been working with our consultant For Leaf uh and a couple other consultants um on engagement, the document itself and SEQA. Uh and today we are here kind of, you know, not quite in the middle of the thirty day public review process, which is required under the law. And we'll go to the next slide. Uh here's some fun slides, just kind of taking us back through that legislative process. Uh if you were at that workshop that we presented, we showed this slide showing all the regulations that um were kind of, we were trying to navigate and deal with. And some of those will look very familiar to you. Uh and then we'll go to the next slide, which shows all the things that were on the docket in March of this year related to housing. Uh staff has been struggling to keep up with this. Uh but then luckily, the next slide shows what actually got adopted this year. So it was a significant reduction in all the bills that got passed. But needless to say, there was some significant pent up demand as we navigated through the COVID process and the the pandemic. And so there is, as we all know, housing is is the top issue for the state and all of our communities and and throughout the state are trying to struggle with it. So the next slide just kind of shows that we've been in a little bit of a legislative frenzy and that's how we feel here at the Community Development Department, trying to react and respond to all of those laws. But then we'll just go to the next slide and kind of summarize where we are with the housing element update itself and some of the themes and the trends that we've been working on. Generally, we've really just been trying to, you know, continue on the successes that we've been making with our current element. Um you'll see on, and I'm sorry, my packet page that I have is not accurate, but in the um around packet page, well, I'm not even gonna try to say it because I know it'll be wrong. Sorry, I'm going for my planning commission packet notes. Uh there are a summary of the twenty fifteen housing element programs. And generally, we feel we've been able to be fairly successful with implementing those. And those programs have been fairly successful to address the housing issues that they were intended to do. Um and so our this, the theme of this is really trying to build on those, continue those efforts, identify new challenges, which are primarily informed by extensive amounts of research uh in that's located in the technical background report and move forward with clarified objectives to how to address both the uh past programs that we and issues that we identified and new ones that came out of that technical background report and all of the outreach and input we've received to date. Um there's a continued uh emphasis and response to the objective and by right housing mandates, while also trying to balance the local character that we've talked about as we brought some of those ordinances together. Um obviously, trying to meet the numerous mandates that were summarized in those uh bills that we talked about just in the previous slides, while also maintaining our access to funding. The state keeps moving um the the grant funding requirements and kind of your uh priority and and how that funds are allocated to your compliance with some of the housing mandates that they're pushing down. Uh obviously, uh the house, Department of Housing, Community Development and the state, their authority over our housing element and their oversight has significantly increased. And so we're responding to that. Um knowing that we will be submitting this document to them and they will be uh telling us whether it's adequate or not to meet the needs of the city based on their perspective at the state level. Um we wanted to thoughtfully reuse some of our opportunity parcels that maybe were in the fifth element and just didn't develop, but still are some of from our perspective, the best locations for how we're gonna meet uh our future housing needs. Uh but that was a bit of a threading the needle because there are a lot of regulations regarding how you reuse those properties. Uh and obviously, we're gonna um meet our or show how we can meet our Rena with those properties and exceed it because we are required to build in a buffer uh with the planning exercise uh that the housing opportunity sites are. Uh you essentially are trying to show how you can accommodate arena at all of various income levels that are required. Uh and then also respond to the ongoing reporting requirements in our annual production report, which we'll present to the council every year in February or March, and then turn into the state in April, which is now required for both the um Rena process, so housing, and then the general plan itself. Catati um and our department have not been um up to date with our general plan um reports. We will, we are playing uh catch up a bit. We will get all of those buttoned up into the council, kind of showing how we are uh our status on responding to all of the general plan programs and policies. Uh and then we'll be able to keep up with that annually um um as required under the law. And we'll go to the next slide. So again, as Mayor Landman correctly identified, this is just intended to raise awareness of the housing element update process and try to generate some comments. Uh our um engagement folks at the Civic Edge have set up a a Catati specific email, catati@thecivicedge.com, where we're asking people to send their email comments. They can mail them to City Hall. They can walk in written comments. They can send them to me at my email. Um any of those ways is fine, but we are trying to funnel folks in directly to that address to kind of streamline and facilitate the process. Uh at the end of the thirty day comment period, October twenty seventh, we have a ten day uh response period built into the legislation. We'll try to respond to those comments, uh document them, and then we submit to HCD for a ninety day review process. Um the goal of HCD's review is to identify any areas where we fall in short in our policies and programs to meet our uh housing needs. Hopefully, we don't get too many comments along those lines. Uh and the public can still send comments directly to the Department of Housing and Community Development during that ninety day review period, and they have their own direct uh email address set up, housingelements@hcd.ca.gov. And if anybody's interested in doing that, they should include Catati Housing Element in the uh subject line of the email. At the end of that process, uh HCD will give us a letter. At the end of that process, uh HCD will give us a letter and identify anything that um they found is deficient. We will provide a response to it, amend our draft to address those shortfalls. Uh, concurrent with that, we're conducting the um environmental review uh and finalizing that draft. And then um we take it through the decision-making process. Uh, like any other planning document, it goes to the planning commission at a public hearing, so there will be more opportunities for the public to provide input. Uh, right now, we're tentatively targeting February twentieth or March sixth. Those dates are tentative right now, but that's where we're gaming out based on the schedule that's in front of us. And then we bring that to the city council with the planning commission recommendation. Uh, conceptually targeting March fourteenth or March twenty-eighth, those dates may move, but generally, that's the time that we will be before the council. And assuming uh everything goes according to this slide, we will have a certified housing element around those timeframes. Uh, and so um Jane Riley has uh been able to join us to assist me with any technical questions. Uh, but if we go to the next slide, there is a recommendation from the Community Development Department that they um apologize that I the plan, it says planning commission. This is the city council. We talked to the planning commission last night. Uh, review the twenty twenty-three draft housing element and technical background report. Identify any concerns or direction, take public comment, and file the report for our future discussion at a public hearing. And I'm available for questions, as is Ms. Riley.
All right. Well, let's just see if we have any questions, and I, right away, I see a hand from Mr. Ford. Go ahead.
Quick question. In that ten day period following the thirty day public comment, that's for city response, is it? Like, can you revise on the basis of public comment during that ten days, or is this like this, this draft is going through the thirty days and then going to HCD?
Jane, can you speak to that a little bit about that process?
Of course. Yes, we have a minimum of ten days during which we must respond to public comments and either incorporate them into the housing element or indicate why we did not incorporate them into the housing element. So it's truly an iterative process.
I see. Thanks.
Interesting. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, I I just have one question. It's um related to, it's on packet page two zero five, which for Mr. Housh, I think it's page uh page fifty.
Yep, correct. I have it.
Uh, program three one, I I, as I was preparing for this meeting tonight, I just had kind of our 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 draft that we had on June fourteenth at our workshop opened side by side with this new draft to um see what changes there were, and it looked like program three one had um several changes to it. And so I was just wondering if you could maybe walk us through what changed in that program and um, because there were several things that were different.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm just reviewing right now. And I will say, you know, Ms. uh Riley is in a very unique spot to be processing multiple uh housing element updates in Southern California, where they've already gotten their letters and had to thread the needle of complying with HCD. And uh also working in the Northern California jurisdiction, so it could be that her experience informed these changes. And sorry, just let me read it for a bit.
So this
Can I ask Councilmember Sparks? I wonder if it would be helpful, Councilmember Sparks, you clearly have put some deep insight into this. Could you point out what you see as the key changes that you were wanted to ask about, and that might help them focus? Save us a little time.
Well, sure, there was an addition of residential care facilities for seven to ten clients, um, which was just inserted. And then I was having trouble wrapping around my own head around it, which is why I asked. It just looked like several of the bullet points either got combined or um.
So yeah, so I can speak to that. We are there's there's state laws regarding our residential care facilities and and how we have to process them, and our current code is noncompliant with that. I think we identified that through the review process since we last talked. Uh, and then to your point, we are looking to consolidate and combine and simplify programs where possible. A, to just make our, make them more easily understood and implemented, and also to make it easier to hold ourselves accountable to how we meet those programs. And then Ms. Riley, if you'd like to add anything.
Thanks. No, that's exactly right. Because every single program requires a structured um reporting and output to HCD every single year, as well as to the city council um through the annual progress report or annual production report, as Noah calls it. We try to really cut down the number of programs, and so we put everything that has to do with amending the code into this one program. And we have a a timeframe with some of the things where we have to do it to be compliant with existing state law. The state requires that we do that right away, so that'll be twenty twenty-three. Frankly, you've already done some of the things that are in here. Um, we have to amend the remaining land use regulations by June of twenty twenty-four, get HCD wants to see everything within the first two years, if it's what they consider a priority project. And then completely required rezonings by twenty twenty-six, which will be consistent with both the requirements of state law and with the um the specific plan amendments coming up. Um, as Noah spoke to, so there are a couple of things that are specific that we have identified through letters that we're getting in Southern California. First, gang jurisdictions from HCD, one of them is for that residential care facility, so that's where that one came from. And then some of the other ones have been either identified with previous letters, so we went back and looked through this this element, knowing that we would see the same things in subsequent letters. And we've either um grouped some things together or broken some things down into specific uh elements, so that HCD will be sure to recognize them.
Okay, thank you very much for that clarification.
All right, and I see next we'll go to Vice Mayor Hart.
Thank you, Mayor. One is um a comment on the uh housing element review from two thousand and fifteen. Um, in that lessons learned, you talk about the high cost of land and construction dated a challenge for the city to reach all of its programs. We also, um, and it was mentioned in a in another section later in the document, but we also were hit in two thousand and seventeen with all the fires, which while that um exasperated the costs of things, it also became as a region um more important um that those resources, which were extremely scarce um from a labor perspective, really uh moved towards getting people that uh were displaced because their houses burned down. So that's not really mentioned, but I think for our region that that's kind of a an important aspect um that those resources, resources uh were needed elsewhere. So, you know, that was just a comment on that. And then for the sake of um everyone, uh, so this goes to HCD, we have responses, you guys respond. Then it comes before the planning commission and the city council. But since HCD will have already made a determination and you will have responded uh realistically if we get public comments at planning commission and uh city council, if they are um contradictory to what HCD has asked us to do, really, what is the leeway there in in taking those comments and and what can we really do? I think that that's important for folks to know, since it's already been to HCD.
So Riley, can you speak to that, just with your experience?
That's a great question, and oh, on one that's worrisome for elected officials, right? Why is this in front of us if there's nothing we can do about it? Um, so the answer is, and I hate to do this, it depends. We hope that we will get a letter of um conditional certification from HCD before we come to you. And the letter would essentially say, if you do all these things, we will certify your housing element. It would follow discussions that they would be having with staff. So we would have a good idea of what was and what isn't um negotiable for them. Um, in the most recent letters that they've been sending out that do that, they identify priority programs that they're really going to be the new, the new office of um, what do they call it? Enforcement?
I think it's the Ministry of Law.
Yes, yes, that's what we'll call it. Melinda Coy's new office um has been identifying those things in the most recent letters. And if we're fortunate enough to get a letter that identifies those things, either the programs we're going to be watching, those would be the things that you would be in trouble if you moved to change some of those things in your final adoption.
Okay. I guess we'll just have to wait and see. I just want, you know, the public and and the council for that matter to be aware that there may be only a limited amount of things that we actually can change. It's not like we, you know, it's not like an ordinance where we have, you know, more leeway. We have to fit within the the confines of HCD. So thank you.
Most of the things that you're not going to have a choice on are going to be statutory matters anyway.
Okay, thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly. Yeah, I just a couple of comments, not much to say other than congratulations to the staff. This is I understood this to be a huge undertaking. I remember it previously as a huge undertaking. It is much bigger than I remember, and kudos for that to everybody involved. That's obvious to me. Uh, regarding particularly some of the points the Vice Mayor brought up, I find it very disheartening that we are forced into now is what the state wants, not what the public may well ask for. Um, but that's where we're at right now for the moment, so that's what it'll be. And I'll just say in general about that and many, not all, but many of the new requirements from the state. I think that your slide, Noah, was unfair to sharks, but at least it was very illustrative of the of where we're at right now. So with that, speaking of public comment, uh, let's see if we have any public comment on this tonight.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right, thank you. We'll bring it back to the council. So this is not an action item. I'll just check in once and see if anybody has anything else they'd like to add in this, and I do see one hand from Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. And is this the appropriate time to give feedback on on this draft, or how does staff want to receive that feedback to it? Or would you like us to email it in, or?
Oh, yeah, it depends. I mean, so we've we've taken a lot of time to gather input uh through the previous meetings. Uh, this me, I actually, I really want to say thank you to Ms. Riley. This meeting was not in any of our agenda or any of our um our schedule. She attended this. It's not even in the budget for her consulting contract. Um, but so we just really felt it's important to raise awareness to the public. So it kind of depends, I guess, on how you were hoping to comment, if you and I hadn't even uh thought about this. Um, because at this point, I guess, making significant changes have the potential to be concerning.
Sure.
Where we are.
Not an action item tonight, too, so we don't want to segue into that.
I'm not interested in making any significant changes, just some changes to the way that the report is presented in a few places.
Uh, I would love to get that in writing, if especially if you have like wording changes, it would be super helpful to get that in writing.
I will send that to you in writing.
That's okay with Noah.
Absolutely. I I was going to suggest the same if if Ms. Sparks can take the time, Councilmember Sparks.
Certainly. Thank you.
And I'm going to look one more time. I don't see any hands. So with that, thank you, everybody, and thanks again to staff, and thank you, Ms. Riley, for being here tonight and answering questions along the way. You've done that for me, and I know you've done it for others, and I certainly appreciate that because this is a complex and at times difficult thing, and the fact that you're juggling multiple ones of these impresses me very much. So with
That's all I do.
Doing much more would be difficult, I'd have to say. So next, we're going to move to item B on our regular agenda, twelve B, and this is an updated COVID nineteen. And let's jump to the printout. So we're going to have a presentation, and the recommendation is uh for three things that we review: current health, COVID health orders, that we adopt a motion directing staff to align city COVID policies with the state and local health orders, and also discuss timing to resume in-person public meetings. So with that, I'll jump right to the staff presentation.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So um just brief background for anyone um, everyone here, I think, knows, but I'll just, so I'll be brief with it. Um, in August of last year, there was a series of, series of county health orders that um required uh testing, weekly testing, and public safety. And at that time, the council um had a conversation about that and um and directed that uh not just public safety, but all staff would fall, you know, into that um health order guideline. And um effectively, that was uh requiring um any unfacinated employees to uh test weekly and also um there's separate orders requiring um face masks, wearing a face mask indoors if you're unvaccinated. That wasn't a uh, that wasn't a particular council mandate. That was just a health order mandate at the time. But those were incorporated into our city um uh city illness and injury prevention plans and guidelines around COVID. So um at the same time, back into, or actually the year before, in twenty twenty, Caloosa also adopted emergency temporary standards for workplace control of COVID. Those are still in, they've been revised several times through COVID. They're still in effect. Um, they their emergency temporary standard remained in effect until the end of this calendar year. And um that's the bulk of our health and safety policies for city employees is driven by the Caloosa ETS requirements um overlaid by uh the um the local health orders and then many local council policy. So um in September of this year, the County Health Department, in alignment with the State Department of Public Health, dropped weekly testing and masking requirements in most settings. So attached to the staff report, there's um, it has some of the changes that occurred in September and and uh sort of the shorthand version is that uh the masking and some of those more of the stricter requirements are um primarily only required at this point in healthcare settings or high-risk settings like um in nursing homes and that type of thing. There is no uh no longer in generally in workplaces a requirement to do any sort of uh testing or even mandatory masking, although um an indoor uh indoor masking is still a a recommendation. Um, I think this probably going to remain a recommendation for a while, but it is not a mandate and hasn't been for a little while now. Uh, and the last bit, just on the COVID um piece of this is that as the legislative session ended recently, the governor signed a law which extended supplemental COVID sick leave to the end of the calendar year. So that was due to expire September thirty, but I, for a variety of reasons, I think maybe the most um obvious reason is that the Caloosa ETS standards go to the end of the calendar year. So they extended the COVID sick leave um policy to the end of the year. Um, aside from that, so the recommendation that the mayor read off is to um just update our um our internal workplace policies to uh just align with the county and state health orders um and then continue that moving forward. So that's um and and the main change there would be just the weekly testing would drop because that was a local health order requirement that went away, and um is the only thing really remaining. Um, the other things that that would happen as we move, if the council decides to do this tonight, is uh we have uh signs up throughout City Hall that say, you know, masks, mask, masks are required if you're unvaccinated to come into City Hall. The restrooms are locked for any, anyone other than staff. Um, we would uh, we would change the signs basically saying masking is recommended and um reopen the restrooms for the public. So that, that's sort of the totality of the changes that would occur if um council decides to move forward with this. Um, so that's one thing. So the other thing um in this um in this item was about discussing the timing of resuming in-person meetings. In the staff report, there's a a table that uh shows kind of where everyone is, just as a point of reference in terms of other city councils in the in Snomo County. And um I was actually surprised at the variety of different things that people are doing. Um, it's not, it it's not really super clear in all cases, but um I would say in general, and this is summarized in the staff report, but I'd say in general, um, most of the cities are in person or at least partially in person at this point. Um, some cities allow some council members to be hybrid, either it seems like on a meeting by meeting basis, or uh maybe in some cases they're um hybrid on a longer, longer term basis at this point, but um, most media, most city councils are at this point in person. Um, in terms of public participation, so most um, most city councils allow for both in-person and virtual public attendance. There's a couple of exceptions. Um, and uh the one really um interesting one is that Runner Park is the only city in the county that doesn't allow people to attend virtually. Um, they're in person and in person only, both for council and for the public. So that was, it's just an interesting outlier, but everyone else seems to allow um hybrid. For, I think For, I think, you know, and I think that would be, you know, as we move to, the council decides to move to in-person, that would definitely be, my recommendation is that we remain, we allow a hybrid option for the public because it seems like that's a good. Just my own observation is, in general, we've, for our general, in general, our meetings have been, I think, better attended with hybrid than in general when they were just in person only prior to COVID. So the other thing, the other consideration for in-person meetings is that we are working on some, just some furniture stuff in the in the council chambers. And I think the soonest that we could be ready would be November. But that's on the front end. On the back end, there's been some state law changes. So we've been operating under, operating under AB 3361, which is the the state law that allows virtual meetings for when there's, when there's an emergency, a declared emergency. And that law will still remain in effect, but at least until the end of, I think, 2023. But then there's also AB 2449, which was just adopted by the governor that will go into effect in January 1, which adds a whole nother set of different requirements for virtual meetings, making them much more complicated to administer. And basically, the shorthand is that to have a, to be virtual, and I'm talking about council members, to be virtual under AB 2449, it's either through a just cause or an emergency finding. Just cause would be announcing announcing that at a regular meeting ahead of the absence or the in-person, in-person absence. Or in the, in the emergency provision would require the council to vote on that to allow that provision to go into effect. And there's limits on how often the council, council member can be absent from the meeting. It's it just becomes much more complicated. So there's, so I'm not entirely clear yet on AB 361 versus AB 2449 and how exactly they play together. Because like I said, AB 361 is still in effect, but then AB 2449 seems to supersede it in many ways. So there's that. Or there's the traditional Brown Act teleconferencing requirements, which is sort of old school Brown Act, which is if you're not, if you're not going to be physically present, you can, on the face of the agenda, you can post the location of the remote meeting. And you have to, if you're, you know, let's say you're remote somewhere, you're on vacation, but you want to zoom in for a meeting, then you would have to post it at your hotel room also, so that if anyone were remote, they could join you. And this, this just hearkens back to the old day of telephone only. Telecon, you know, teleconferencing, because that was before the public could join via a platform like Zoom. So there was some logic to it. If you wanted to participate in a meeting in your, you know, in Europe, and someone followed you to Europe to hang out, and they want to be in the meeting, then they, you know, then the only way they could participate is it's a direct, you know, one-to-one connection to the council meeting through that remote phone call, because you'd have to be in the room with them. That's not the way it is anymore, obviously. With Zoom, you can come in from anywhere, as long as it's published, the Zoom credentials are published. So it doesn't make as much sense in today's environment, but that option is still available for council members that can't meet the just cause or emergency conditions exemptions to participate remotely. So suffice it to say, it just gets much more complicated come January 1. And we'll work through what the 2449 differences are and how they overlap with 361, so that we're clear on that before we get to January 1. But but it becomes more complicated. So on the front end, we couldn't do it any sooner than sometime in November, and you probably want to do it before you hit January 1. It seems like, in just my opinion, just a suggestion for discussion, a sweet spot might be shooting for the December 13 meeting. Both because it's before the end of the year and also that's the council transition and there's a lot of, you know, it could, it may be a good opportunity to have an in-person meeting and get back into it at that point. With that, I would be happy to answer any questions.
All right, with that segue, let's see where the council's at. Any questions before we go to public comment? Not seeing any question. I do see one from the Vice Mayor. Please go ahead.
Yeah, when I, when I read this, Damian, it's interesting the way you explained it on the just cause, you know, that you have to let people know in advance. But when you look at the way the bill defines it, so one of the definitions is that you don't have childcare for that night. Well, you wouldn't necessarily know that a meeting before to be able to notify the council ahead of time. Same with that you have a contagious illness that prevents you from attending. I mean, that emergency versus just cause seem both the same because just cause implies that you tell the council ahead of time. An emergency is something where the council actually has to vote on. Is that?
Yeah, yeah, I'll take a stab at it, and then maybe City Attorney Barker could weigh in. But so the emergency provision and the just cause seem to have some overlap on them. So that's a point of like bit of confusion right now, sort of figuring out what what controls. But and I might have misspoke on the, on the just cause. It may not have to be in advance, but it has to be announced at a regular meeting. And so perhaps, and this is where maybe the city attorney may have some input, perhaps that could be right at the start of the meeting that you're participating in remotely. I'm not sure. I'm still trying to figure out all the details of that bill, but it gets, it gets complicated, more complicated.
Okay. And then secondly, it's your understanding, and I guess Mr. Barker can can talk to this, too. It still does not, as you understand it with all these bills overlaying, that we can still use the original Brown Act where we actually post an address and allow that agenda to be posted and still participate remotely.
That's, that's my understanding, that we still could use the sort of old school Brown Act teleconferencing rules if we if that's, because, because a lot of times when you're gone, you're not called for the just cause or emergency provisions. And so you know, the old, kind of old style Brown Act would be, I think, needed.
Well, they're very, I mean, the the just cause ones that are listed in there are really very specific and don't really handle, as you said, you know, say you're on vacation and you want to participate because you can make the time available to be there. None of that is incorporated in into the definition that was very strict of that. So either we have to be able to go back to the old method, or what they're saying is that we can't participate, period, if you're on vacation.
Yeah, so the the old way is left in place. The new legislation is intended to be apparently a new approach. And this is all still a little murky to me. I've read this several times. I'm going to have to dig into legislative history to really figure it out, but it seems to give individual council members the right to to do virtual meetings on short notice and, you know, when they have an emergency right at the beginning of the meeting. But there are a bunch of strict restrictions. But the old way stays in place and AB 361 stays in place as well.
Okay.
So so that's how I understand it. We're continuing to review this and we'll have an update for our clients at some point in the near future.
Well, that's good to hear because that was really concerning to me. You know, I, I sometimes am not physically here, but I always make myself available to be able to participate. And it would be really not a good thing moving forward that the public can virtually attend whenever they want, wherever they want. Yet council members can't. So that seemed to be moving in the wrong direction from where I sit. So thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Certainly, Vice Mayor. Well, I think we're all grateful for the clarity that the state's provided on this tonight. I can see that across all of our faces. So that's helpful. So with that, I'll ask if there's, if there's no questions, I'll jump to right to public comment, then we can bring it back to wrestle our way through this. No further questions? Let's go to public comments. We do have a couple of attendees still.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. Speaking to our attendees, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. So we'll bring this back. So we've already reviewed the current COVID health orders. So next, I, as we do our comments, I'd like to know from each of you if we're comfortable adopting a motion directing staff to align city COVID policies with the state and local health orders. I would expect we will be, but we should hear that from each of us. And then I'd love to hear from you your thoughts and timing to resume in-person public meetings. Evidently, we can be ready to go as soon as I guess a month from now, the first meeting in November. And I believe we are fortunate enough to be in a position to be able to offer hybrid meetings, too, which I think is a benefit. So at any rate, I'll see who would like to speak first in this and share their thoughts. Don't all rush at once. So there we go. All right. And as soon as I said that, your hands went up, ding, ding, ding. And so I believe you went up in this order, Councilmember Ford, Vice Mayor Harvey, and Councilmember Sparks, but it was very close.
So thank you. I'm, I'm comfortable with with aligning our COVID policies with state and county guidelines. As to us going back in person, I hope we can be back in person by the December meeting when the new members are seated and sworn in. I am, I would be comfortable returning at the first November meeting. So that's where I'm at. Thanks.
Thanks, Mayor Hart.
Yes, I'm comfortable with aligning the orders with the state and local. And my preference, I think it would be good for the new council members coming in and the old council members that will not be with us for us to have our maiden voyage, if you will, on our December meeting. That would, I think, work out well for for all concerned. So that's my thoughts.
All right, thank you. And Councilmember Sparks.
Yes, I'm comfortable aligning our ordinance with the with the public health new standards. And yes, I think December 13th would be a really nice time to go back face to face. I would be, I would also be comfortable doing it sooner, but knowing that our second meeting in November is the week of Thanksgiving. I don't know if anyone's planning travel. So that's a consideration. All right, thank you.
All right. So, yeah, you know, I have to admit, I think I've been as cautious about this as anybody, or at least I believe I have been, but I've been watching numbers carefully and everything and looking at the examples where the other cities are at now. Based again on numbers and not just what other people are doing, I think it's time for us to go back to live. I'm very pleased that our staff and our city has set us up so we can ride virtual. I think that's one of the few good things that came from the pandemic, certainly for the public, the recognition that being able to access some of these government meetings through virtual means is really beneficial at times for some people and allows slightly better participation. Even if it is, at times, has its own challenges and can be a little clunky. I think it's well worth it. I personally would be comfortable going back for the first meeting in November. I heard that from Mr. Ford. I also heard my other colleagues say they were happy going into the first meeting in December. I would have been comfortable going on the meeting of the 22nd to split the difference, the classic council move. But let me ask staff, are we actually, will, on the 22nd, are we planning a meeting? What's going on with that? And how many days remind me? Where is that sitting?
Yeah, we, we do have meetings planned for both days in November. And then that would be November 8th and 22nd. And then we have the final meeting of the year on December 13th.
So, yeah, that's basically two days before Thanksgiving. So let me just ask now, do any of my friends plan to travel? Would this be problematic if we did choose to start at the end of November? Councilmember Ford.
I unfortunately don't plan that far ahead, but the, the, my understanding is through the end of this year, before 2449 kicks in, we have more flexibility in terms of of virtual, because as long as we do the monthly declaration of emergency or whatever, so that somebody, even if the, if we did go back in person, somebody who was traveling could participate virtually fairly easily this year. Is that correct?
Let's ask Mr. Barker.
Yes, that is correct. We would be able to maintain enough flexibility to allow a council member that happened to be away to to participate remotely in that circumstance while the rest of the council was present in person. And some of my other clients already do that.
Okay. Well, if the council's amenable, are we comfortable then unsettling on November 22nd? That gives staff a little extra time than their beginning in, beginning of November that they were saying they might be ready just to make sure that everything's set to go. But at the same time, then we're doing our page to provide as many options as possible for people now that it's the appropriate time to do it. I'm seeing some head nodding, some thumbs up. All right. So I think we have direction in that. The only thing I do need, I believe, is I need somebody to adopt a motion directing staff to align the city policy with COVID policies. It stays here.
So moved.
Second.
And that was, see, by the end of the meeting, we get pretty snappy with this stuff. Thank you, Vice Mayor and Councilmember Ford. All right, can we have a roll call vote on that, please?
Councilmember Sparks?
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Harvey?
Yes.
Mayor Landman?
And yes, so that carries with four and one absentee, which I should have been mentioning earlier tonight. All right. So that concludes our regular agenda and brings us now to the city manager's update. And we'll ask city manager a bid to let us know what's going on here in Katati.
Well, I think, so I'll try to be brief. We have, just a reminder, we have a drug takeback event on October 29. We always can take prescription drugs at the police department. There's in the lobby there, there's a takeback bin. But we're having the takeback event here at the school or in the community center in the old school, 216 East School Street. And that's 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. on, that's a Saturday. So if you have any unused pharmaceuticals, bring them by, because we want to get them out of the landfills and out of the wastewater streams. We won again the triple crown for financial reporting. So that's huge. That means that we won all three awards from the Governor, Governmental Finance Officers Association, thanks to our Administrative Services Department and great work that they do. So that's, that's huge. It seems like it's almost becoming routine now, but it's definitely not. Great job to them to get that done. And then also for the street preservation project, the slurry seals and repairs have been completed, but there's going to be street stripings, so the lane markings and that sort of thing are going to have to go down. And that's currently planned for next week, Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday. So there will be some work around town on that. It's over five miles of streets, so they're going to be busy laying down stripes. Yeah. Also, I don't have a hard start date yet, but towards the end of October, we're anticipating that we will start to see the sewer main project start up, so the West Sewer Sewer Main Project start up. That's between Olaf and Water Road. So just when one road project is done, another one is going to start up, which is going to cause traffic jams. So and we'll try to be as good as we can about it, but it will be some, I'm sure for people. The pathway project is well underway, so the the new pathways are laid down at McGinnis between McGinnis and Marsh, and also the work at Pocket Park, so that's going on right now. And for events, we have Katati Candyland coming up on October 31st. So we have something good is already signed it up for that. So it's going to be a big event centered around downtown in the Farm and Floody Ranch where people, kids can trick or treat during the day on Halloween days. That's a Monday this this year, while still light out. So it's two to five and mostly geared towards the little ones, but might be some bigger ones there, too. We also, just before that, on October 24th, is a day off from first, from school, the school district here. And if anybody needs childcare that day, we have camp, we're running Camp Katati that day. And that's for ages five to 12, 8 a.m. to 5 p.m., and people can sign up online for that. And then also on So that's the twenty-fourth of October. On the twenty-eighth of October, we're hosting another kids' night out event at the community center. Again, this is ages five to twelve. That allows grownups to have a child free evening to bone errands or go on a date or whatever they want to do from five to nine PM. And, and we feed the kids pizza, perhaps names in the movie. So it's another opportunity for parents. And then also on that same day, on, on October twenty-eighth, we have our last Fall Youth Day at Veranda Fleddy Ranch, which is hosted by our partners Sandy Loan. And this is free and it'll all be about Halloween and will happen from three thirty to five PM. And we try to get people to RSVP so we know how many people we're getting, but we've gotten really big turnouts at these youth days that we've been holding. So it's, it's been really successful. So it's good. And with that, I will just stop there, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Let's see if we have any questions tonight from the council, council. I think you have so much going on. We're overwhelmed and that's a good thing, Mr. Obed. Thank you. So for that, it's a perfect segue. We'll go from city manager to report to city council member reports. And I'll ask my colleagues if they have anything they would like to report on tonight. Vice Mayor Harvey.
I, yes, been busy on a couple of ad hoc committees. Nothing to report right now, but things are happening in our county. And then I was with the, with actually most of the council attended the Jamie Lane ribbon cutting and it was a very hot day, but it was so beautiful out there and it was so wonderful to meet the new families and actually meet them inside their homes. They were just so excited. So that's just a great project and I would love to see more of those projects. So hopefully we can do more, but great job, Mayor, great job, staff. I mean, the whole group, it was just pretty incredible to hear the stories of the number of folks and groups that it took to make that happen. So I'm glad that those families are finally moving in. So thank you for that. That's all I have tonight, Mayor.
All right. I'll look to my other colleagues. I'm not seeing anything right now, so I will go ahead and give mine. I have two items to give. And I feel like Professor Farnsworth from Futurama, because I want to say good news, everybody, but I think they're both good news. First of all, you may remember back in, it was the end of June this year, I asked if the council was willing to support SB nine forty from Lard. We did support that. We also did ask the Sonoma County Mayor's and Council Members Legislative Committee to support. And I want you to know that this was approved by the governor on September twenty-eighth. So that went through as we had hoped. The next step, as you may remember, is when Santa Rosa comes forward with an update to their rent stabilization ordinance, they have one much as we do. I had asked him, and there seemed to be some interest in us joining them. And the reason for this was that both of us use the San Francisco CPI as a basis for that rate that our lower income people at mobile homes are charged. But Santa Rosa during the housing process update actually discovered that San Francisco, who we base this on, uses seventy-five percent, not a hundred percent of that CPI as we do and as Santa Rosa does. So when that time comes, and I will not be here to help you with that, but I hope that my colleagues will keep an eye open for that and staff as well when the time is right to follow that direction that Santa Rosa will help clear some of the potential legal hurdles for us that we can do that, because I think it would be a good thing to do for the community. So I would ask you for that favor in the next year. I know, I suspect from what I hear, you'll be busy. But if you can manage to get that done, that would be a very good thing. And lastly, as a result of our unveiling of our first in the region, police EV patrol car, I did ask at the Regional Climate Protection Authority for us to agendize a discussion on it. And I'm happy to tell you that our meeting yesterday, it was agendized, we did discuss it, discussed it, and we voted unanimously with representatives from all nine cities and the board of supervisors present to put forth a resolution encouraging supporting all jurisdictions in Sonoma County to agendize discussions to do two things. Number one, commit to electrification of their fleets as they replace them, where suitable BEV replacements are available. And secondly, to also commit to charging those BEVs with local a hundred percent renewable power. So hopefully this will be like the gas station ban, which we did roughly a year ago, and now just about everybody in the county is on board with that. That's really got critical mass in government terms quickly. And perhaps we can even do it quicker here. So and your job, hopefully, if you choose to accept it, channeling a really old, only Ben Ford smiled at that. And you probably only saw the reruns, but should you choose to accept it, would be once our county has enough people to make this notable. I would suggest we start working with our colleagues that SETA and it's smart, where we have colleagues from Nancino and Marin and issue that friendly challenge, hey, come on, join us. And once that happens, I suspect it will be like the gas station ban, which is now being picked up across the state and even outside the state. And these are the things will help speed the adoption, help the public move quicker to make that transfer to electrification. I think it would be a very good thing. So happy to share that with you tonight. And that is all I had. Other than a thanks for everybody involved with the ribbon cutting too, as the vice mayor said, that was very nice. And it was good to see both council members Ford, Sparks there as well. And other than being too hot, it was a wonderful time. So with that, let's see, we've completed council members, city man, council member reports. I'm going to go to item fifteen, which is public comment on non-action items. I do see an attendee, so let's see if we have any comment.
Thank you, Mayor Landman. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use the raise hand icon. Mayor Landman, that will end public comment.
All right. Our next for item sixteen, ask the city manager if we have any information received after the agenda was posted.
Mayor, we discussed everything that we actively goes active on today. So nothing new.
Perfect. Well, with that, what I'd like to do, if the council is willing, is adjourned tonight in appreciation. Appreciation for fifty years of glove repairs from Fran Fleet at Sandalady Glove Repair. A very longtime Katati icon, and I hope we could all agree to wish her the absolute best and thank her for everything she's made to the community. So with that and no objection, we are adjourned at eight twenty-seven. Thank you, everybody. See you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
Good night.
Good night.